Welcome to Perspectives Online and on Air from WFSU Public Media. I'm Tom Blanigan. This is our third in a series of political perspectives in the run-up to the August 18th primary election in Leon County. This program recorded on Tuesday, July 7th for playback both on WFSU FM and the WFSU Public Media Facebook page on Thursday, July 9th. And today we'll be chatting with the three contenders for Tallahassee City Commission, Seat 1. We meet the candidates in a moment. Before we do, here's how the action will proceed. Each candidate will have a few minutes to talk about their background and the unique qualities they feel they bring to the office. And then we're going to delve into some specific issues that impact the city of Tallahassee most immediately. And we'll give everyone a chance to share their thoughts on how they would approach those matters if elected. Now, even though we don't enforce strict time limits, it's not like a traditional debate in that fashion, we do ask folks to keep their comments as brief as they can so we can cover more ground in the conversation. So let's meet our candidates for Tallahassee City Commission, Seat 1. We did a random drawing in advance of the program to find out what order we do this and try to keep it kind of random. And randomly, it happened to put everyone in alphabetical order. So we'll hear first from the person who now occupies the seat, the incumbent Elaine Bryant. And Ms. Bryant, welcome. It is all yours, ma'am. Tell us a little about yourself and your background here on the commission and the qualities you think that you bring to the job.
Thank you, Tom, so much. Just delighted, first of all, to be here today. My name is Elaine Bryant, and I currently serve as your City Commission in Seat 1. And I am definitely asking for your vote to actually continue in my effort to serve this community. So if you're asking your question like, well, who is this person? And how did this happen? I was appointed a couple of years ago when, in our city, there was a seat that opened up because of some allegations of corruption. And I was appointed out of 96, probably over 96 persons, to serve out this term. It has been a very non-stop, and I say non-stop because I am constantly trying to serve our community in a way that actually will support the vision and mission for which we stand. Upon getting on the commission, I had opportunity, as one of my first challenges and first charges is to help to develop the strategic plan. That's important to me because, as a strategic planner myself, I know the importance of having a plan, actually having goals, and most importantly, having the knowledge to know who to hold accountable for reaching the goals. Otherwise, we may do great things, but it may not actually align itself with where we have planned to go. So that was one of the first things that I was able to provide direct leadership in. Very, very excited that for the current commission, that at least 70, 80% of the time, we were on the same page. So our ability to study the issue and our ability to actually come up with what seems to be now, in retrospect, a very concerted effort to move forward has paid forward for our city. A little bit about me, I am married and have a husband who puts me to work at Rickards High School for the basketball team. I do a lot of give-back to the community. I have served in leadership roles on at least five nonprofits. So that brings me up to my actual career, which has taken me from actually being a school psychologist, being, working in the Department of Law Enforcement, Department of Juvenile Justice, owning my own business, doing management consulting, and strategic planning. And I look forward to another four years serving this community. For me, it's all about service. And when I say this "community," I'm talking about holistically, all factions of our community. I think we have done that. Do we have a long ways to go? We will constantly, I hope, be pursuing a goal. We will, on a regular basis, reflect upon our past to better understand where we've been, but that we will live in the future with a plan, live in the present, I'm sorry, with a plan for the future. That's kind of my mantra, and I want to continue to pursue that as we move forward. I won't take up any more time. I can go on, but I'm going to stop. That's who Elaine Bryant is, and thank you so much again.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's find out who William Moore is. You are next, sir. A little bit about yourself and what you bring to the table.
So my family's been here in Tallahassee for generations now. I'm actually a neuroscience major at FSU. And yeah, I'm a political writer and also an author of two books. I am a young guy, but you know what? I'm ambitious and I have some big ideas for the city.
Very good. And thank you, Mr. Moore. We wrap up with Jaclyn Jack Porter, also running for the City Commission, Seat 1. Ms. Porter, go right ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Tom, for having me. My name is Jack Porter. I'm running for Tallahassee City Commission. I'm running to fight back against special interests, empower our neighborhoods, and bring the voices of everyday people back to City Hall. I have a background in community advocacy, planning, and public policy, which I think are the experience we need in our city commission to make informed decisions with a perspective about our neighborhood's needs, so that we make sure that we are growing in a way that doesn't compromise the character of our city. I began my career at a public defender's office. I have a master's in urban and regional planning and public administration from FSU. I served as a commissioner on the Tallahassee-Leon Commission on the Status of Women and Girls for three years, and my entire career has been in the public sector. But I would say my greatest qualification for this seat and for this position is the enormous amount of community support that is backing this campaign. We have received over 700 individual contributions and worked with hundreds of volunteers who are excited about bringing change to City Hall. This is truly a people-powered grassroots campaign, and I'm honored to be a part of it. As your next city commissioner, I will listen to you and I will fight for you. I think that in the past, we've seen time and time again missed opportunities by our leadership to do right by our people, to be on the right side of history, and to move Tallahassee forward and make the change that we desperately need. So I'm asking for your vote on August 18th. And if you're interested in joining us, please visit jackfortalahassee.com.
Those are the three contenders for Tallahassee City Commission, Seat 1. The incumbent Elaine Bryant. The challengers, William Moore and Jack Porter. Some dates to keep in mind for the upcoming primary election in Leon County. The deadline for voter registration is July 20th. Early voting is going to start on August 3rd and then continue through the 16th of the month. Early voting locations, by the way, are posted on the Supervisor of Elections website. And as Jack mentioned, primary election day is August 18th. And you also have the vote-by-mail option, which is being pushed right now because of the COVID-19 pandemic. Let's get into some really specific issues that are pertinent to the city of Tallahassee. And one of the preeminent ones right now, in fact, this is before the current makeup of the commission, is the expected loss in revenue going forward into the next fiscal year, which is going to be pretty significant, again, because of the pandemic. Starting with you, Ms. Bryant, how do you see the city of Tallahassee maintaining its level of services, especially since right now it seems to be the consensus, at least with the sitting commission of which you are a part, there's going to be no increase in property taxes. But again, you still have an ability to bring in more revenue through the city electric utilities. So how do you fight that going forward? You cut back on services, increase electric rates? What do you think?
No, I don't think you'll see any increase in taxes. But we have fortunately planned, not for a pandemic, but to ensure that the reserves that we have for the city would help us in times such as this. We just received our AA rating from the company that actually looks at the stability of your finances for the city of Tallahassee. We're very proud of that because our planning effort, and it keeps us on the forefront, to be very honest, and ensure that we can do things along the way that will help us to be proactive, really, and be available to be responsive to times such as this during COVID-19. So I don't think that you will see that we're going to have our essential services, which is our primary, obviously, our primary delivery, impacted by COVID-19. Now, as we move forward, obviously, we have to continue to look at what we're doing, actually goes back to the plan that we've put in place. Will we, in fact, be able to do everything that we wanted to do? Probably not. We are actually having our budget workshop this week. So we will actually look at those things that actually can be delayed, such as maybe purchase of automobiles or whatever, and continue to press on as we are, given the fact that our projections takes into effect a reduction in our revenue.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Moore, your thoughts here on city revenue loss? And how do you make that up with either reduced services or more income? What do you do?
Well, obviously, for this next year, it's going to be complicated. I don't know what the solution is. I feel like, you know, it's going to take some time to figure out. But on a more long-term scale, my idea to bring more revenue towards the city is by intertwining our city with the natural beauty of nature, much like the city of Singapore. Not only is it extremely environmentally friendly to intertwine our cities with trees and vines and moss and nature, but it's also beautiful to look at. If you look at Singapore, it's become one of the biggest tourist attractions in the world, simply because they put trees on the buildings and moss on the walls. It's, people like to look at, you know, the architectural aspect of it. So that's my idea of how we can increase revenue in the city.
Nature-based tourism in an urban environment, interesting concept. Jack Porter, what do you think?
You know, I think this is a great example of why it was so reckless of our commissioners to move forward without public comment, with huge obligations of taxpayer funds for big projects, such as the Northeast Gateway and the Wallany Boulevard, which is encroaching on our neighborhoods. Add a convention center to that, that will cost millions to borrow, and which Blueprint Board members voted to double our commitment to. Despite a drop in revenues, I don't know when we're going to see the use for a convention center in the near future, given the restrictions that COVID is placing on, you know, every aspect of our lives. We're talking tens of millions of dollars at a very uncertain time. I think these were reckless, irresponsible decisions to make in this environment, especially without public comment. And I would say in general about, you know, sources of revenue, municipal broadband has been something that's been floated by different members of the community as a source of revenue for the city without raising taxes. I would also say that it is very rarely just a question of, you know, availability of resources, but our priorities and where we're investing. So I think we need to be mindful of that. But our first and foremost, our priority needs to be investing in our citizens, investing in underserved neighborhoods. And I think that before the pandemic, we were seeing a misalignment in our priorities and even in our plans and how we're executing them. So we need serious oversight on these big commitments made by our commissioners, and I will work closely with my colleagues to rectify these fiscally irresponsible decisions.
Just last week here on WFSU Public Media, we had a special program that delved into the potential future of law enforcement, of policing in the city of Tallahassee, given the ascendancy of the Black Lives Matter movement, the investigation into allegations of police brutality in many instances all over the country, including one particularly high-profile situation here in the city of Tallahassee. That has a lot of people rethinking the relationship between the citizenry and law enforcement on a multiple of levels. Starting with you, Elaine Bryant, talk a bit about how you see that conversation moving forward, particularly as a lot of people are calling for a complete rethinking of the city's law enforcement arm, the Tallahassee Police Department, be it totally defunding or reallocating those resources into some other areas. What are your thoughts in that direction? And you'll have to take yourself off mute there. I think that'll help.
That helps me a lot. I was, what I was saying was, before I get to that question, because when the entire city commission has been called reckless and irresponsible, I just cannot let that go as it is. I think that the city commission has not been reckless, are irresponsible, and that goals have been put in place long before this commission was in place. And we have worked diligently, not only to get citizen input, but we have taken our meetings out to the citizens. So I just, I won't respond to the rest of it, but when all of my colleagues, and myself included, are called reckless and irresponsible, I just cannot let that go. Now, on to your question about where we're going as far as it relates to policing and Black Lives Matter, and how will we move forward? I think everyone knows by now, there was a group already put in place that had not been able to kick off because of COVID-19, to work with the police chief and to work with officers about how they could better interact with and receive input from our community. But subsequent to that, in our last meeting, and it was probably the IA meeting, I'm right now, not sure if it was commission meeting, or I'm on so many of them right now, but just know that we actually put in place a citizen advisory group that would, really, at the conclusion of what could be killing in our community, that it would actually go before that board. Now, it hasn't happened yet. We're in the process, obviously, of trying to get the board put in place and have concrete rules for getting people appointed to that board. But that is an effort, actually, to get information from our non, I'll call it, folks working for the city right now, independent of the city, in order to actually be responsive and in many ways proactive to any kind of possible future action. Now, we have heard, and I have heard on several occasions, that those people will be people that you would just select from, no, no, it's not going to be just that simple. People do get to apply, and the procedures for that will come out very soon. Not only is this something that is duplicated all across the United States of America, we have done some research, and having the city commission, the body that is responsible for making those selections, be the group that actually gives them the authority to go out and do what they plan to do, or what will be in the mantra to do, is not something we thought up on our own. This has been proven in other states to be effective, in other cities, even in Florida, to be effective. So I'm looking forward to, even before we get to that board, challenging our own police department, and they have already started, to turn around their policies, and they call it facing outward, so that people in the community can actually look at it for themselves. People have expressed some concern about chokeholds. We need to know in our community that that was off our books five years ago. So some things, because of a lack of information that has been shared with our community, we find ourselves asking for things that really currently exist. Are we in a perfect state? No. I think we still have much room to grow and develop, share information, change policy. We know that the training for our police officers is really governed by the Standards and Training Commission at the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. The curriculum for our law enforcement officers is developed through FDLA. So we have to start actually pressing toward what is the root cause? Are the officers really following policy that currently exists? Currently exists? And if so, what needs to be changed? Are they receiving the training that they need in order to do the things that, obviously, are representative of how we believe, as a community, law enforcement should operate? And the last thing I'll say, because I think you brought up the fact that maybe we should, that there is at least some discussion about, across the country, of defunding police stations and moving that funding to another area. I honestly believe that every area, including our social workers, our police, our mental health professionals, all play a critical role in the success of our society. It's no one group. So to take money from the police department or defund it and put it all in another area without even an assessment of what our current various factions of our community is actually doing, may not be a good move. In fact, I don't think it is. I think that we have to do our assessment upfront. We have to do funding to support all of our programs, including our police. Because I just believe, deep in my heart, when someone calls the police, they actually want the police to respond. I believe that. So I'll stop, Tom.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Your thoughts on the same subject, Mr. Moore?
So I've actually gone down to the Capitol and interviewed these protesters, and the number one thing that they all want is more training for police officers. So my idea is to take a quality-over-quantity approach, meaning we'd have fewer officers, but they'd actually be higher-paid and better-trained. They need tactical and physical training every week with yearly evaluations. This will transform the police force as a whole into something that people can actually look up to. You know, we'd have the cream of the crop in this program, instead of being a little lackadaisical, maybe letting some officers become officers who shouldn't have that privilege. And I actually just had an interview with the PBA the other week, and they loved the idea. I mean, I think this is the perfect way to resolve this problem, because it gives the protesters what they want, more training for cops, while also turning the police force into a more reputable program.
All righty. Ms. Porter, what do you think?
So I think that there's a major problem with accountability all up and down, our city and local government, and it starts at the top. To ensure real transparency to citizens and taxpayers, we need to be able to review our policies as a whole. We need to review any body camera footage that exists in any incidents that are, that people are deeply concerned about right now. I think there are serious and legitimate concerns that have gone unanswered about what happened with the last police chief search. Tony Gilliam is a friend of mine. He cited concerns about City Hall that I think many people share. This is an issue that transcends party and demographic and all other categories. Even many police and law enforcement folks, they want to be, they want to be funded to do their job, and they don't want to be responsible for doing things that they have not been trained for. They want there to be more affordable housing. They want there to be mental health care. They want those things to be funded. So I think, you know, when we're talking about defunding the police, I think people mean different things. But I do think that it is a very common-sense solution that we, yes, assess how we are spending our money, what our budget looks like, and making sure that we are investing equitably in areas that our community, where we're hurting the most. If we restore accountability at the top, if we give people a real say in how they are policed, in how our taxpayer dollars are being spent, if we fund the police for the brave and good services that they generally provide, and not for everything else that they're not equipped to do, you know, I think it is a lot more than just about retraining. They need the resources to do their jobs, but we need to be investing, I agree, in a holistic way, and making sure that we don't have people who are going without a place to sleep, without food to eat. I mean, there are real issues in our neighborhoods, in our city, that need to be addressed and that need that funding. And we don't need to, you know, there are other places where we can get it. For example, the millions of dollars to the convention center, those kinds of things. There's other places where taxpayer funding or investments, I think, are wasteful and where we can make sure that everyone is getting their needs met for our great city.
You are in tune to a special edition of Political Perspectives from WFSU Public Media. The seat is Tallahassee City Commission, Seat 1, and we have the three contenders for that position with us today, both on air and online. The incumbent Elaine Bryant, the challengers, William Moore, and Jaclyn Jack Porter. If you miss all or part of a Perspectives program, it's always available online, not only on our wfsu.org website, but also our WFSU Public Media Facebook page. We try to have the most recent program up on both places as soon as we possibly can, after it appears on the radio. In fact, the Facebook page is concurrent with the radio broadcast, so you can go back and view the program as often as you may like. One thing that Tallahassee has become kind of nationally, I guess we should say infamous for, is a great degree of inequity when it comes to the distribution of wealth in our community, to the point that one of our ZIP codes, 32304, is acknowledged as the poorest in the entire state of Florida, and that income inequity is playing into a lot of problems, not the least of which being the aforementioned law enforcement debate that is going on in our town. What can, what should, members of the Tallahassee City Commission do to address that situation? And we'll start with Elaine Bryant. What do you think?
Well, let me first say that I hope that on all of these questions, Tom, I don't start at all, but let me go ahead on this one, and say to you that I think that, tell you what, before I answer this question, tell me what it is against, I can stay on focus.
All right. This is the income inequity that we have. Now, certainly, it's county-wide, but within the limits of the city of Tallahassee, still a chunk of 32304, the South Side, and some other areas, some pockets of poverty, if you will, are within the city. And how can, again, commissioners address that?
Well, you know, it's very, we need to be very structured in our approach. It did not start, what we see today, did not start in the last three years. It is very historic and systemic. But in the last two years, my colleagues and I have actually placed into the Greater Bond Neighborhood over $6 million. And you say, well, Elaine, that's not much compared to other parts of our city. But I would venture to say to you that it's a start from where we were at nothing just a few years ago. So the only thing that we have asked, and we continue to press toward, is a plan that tells us what the needs are. We talk a lot about homelessness, about affordable housing. We talk about not having, well, really having a food desert, and not having adequate opportunity to go and get groceries. But the question becomes, how do we develop our communities? Now, in South City, as you probably well know, in the Orange Avenue Apartments, we actually are doing a transitional type overhaul of that area. That also didn't actually start with this commission, but we are definitely supportive of it, and we're moving it forward. And in the Providence area, they too have a plan that has resulted in not the infrastructure being improved, of having better lighting. So in all areas of our city on the South Side, in the 32304, as well as other ZIP codes, we have invested dollars, because it obviously is an economic challenge, in making sure that money is being invested in the South Side. So we'll continue to do that. We're not going to stop. We have a commitment right now, I think, of over $19 million that has been targeted toward that has been targeted toward the South Side. It won't happen this year, though. It will happen in the future, and it is something that irrespective of who sits on the commission, if they support, as we do, moving the South Side from where we are right now and improving it, and the improvements will absolutely be incremental, we'll continue to move forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Now into the final half of our program, so we can start that mixing up process that you talked about. A little bit more. So Jack Porter, your thoughts again on income inequity in this community and how it might be addressed on the city commission level?
So, you know, the city has, of course, made some meaningful investments in neighborhoods such as Bond. But people on the ground have some serious concerns that the process, and we all know it's been a long time coming. I've spoken to people who have been around in Tallahassee for 30 years, you know, their entire lives. And they say the same neighborhoods that needed investment 30 years ago still need it today. And I don't think that that is a matter of, you know, it's just where our priorities. And if what we're doing, if we are doing all we say we are doing, then why isn't it working? You mentioned, Elaine, Commissioner Bryant, mentioned the Providence neighborhood. It's a neighborhood that I've been proud to work with for several years. I'm proud to have the endorsement of the president of their neighborhood association. The time that I've spent in that neighborhood, I mean, we are doing an absolute disservice to residents in the South Side of town who sorely need infrastructure. And of course, all the investment we make, the change we make will be incremental. It should have the community at the center driving those decisions. But there have been plans in place for years that have not been funded. Plans are not the end all be all. We need action. And if we're able to find millions of dollars to commit to a neighborhood in Walani that hasn't even been built, we certainly have the resources to do that in neighborhoods that have existed for many, many years. A major problem, as I've said it over and over, is about our priorities. Some of the investments we've made are good, but if you look at them in totality, they're pennies on the dollar. We need balance, and I will bring my planning and policy expertise to bear on these issues, and we will get it done.
Okay, Mr. Moore, your turn here when it comes to, again, addressing those inequities that have been befuddling some pretty great minds in this community for quite a while.
Well, obviously, there's a lot of different factors that play into that. But without a doubt, one of the biggest contributors to pushing people into poverty is the war on drugs. You know, when we send these drug addicts to jail and we arrest them and give them a criminal record, we are ruining their lives. These drug addicts don't need punishment. They need help. They need to go through rehabilitative programs. But we don't offer that nearly to the extent that we should. And another thing is, a lot of kids in these communities don't have a proper role model to show them, you know, the basics of how to function in society. And I think that's something our education system lacks. You know, if these children don't have a role model to look up to or a proper role model to look up to, then it should be our education's job to step in that role. You know, they need to teach these kids how to handle the daily stressors of their lives. Because what's the point in learning math, science, you know, whatever, if you can't even handle the stress in your life, the constant violence going around in your community?
Let's reverse course here and start the next question with you, sir, because it has been mentioned a couple times already in the program. When it comes to planning, development and all that, the Walani plantation and some other outlying areas that are being targeted for redevelopment have been mentioned with a great deal of, should we say skepticism in some parts of the community. So the train has not completely left the station on those issues right now. As a city commissioner and part of that planning process, how would you address those? Is it time to move forward, put the brakes on, scrap it completely? What do you think?
Well, honestly, with this whole virus situation right now, I think that should be our top priority. I mean, what, this might be a little off topic, but the fact that we can't even enforce restaurant workers to wear masks, I mean, I understand how we're going to enforce everyone to wear one. So obviously, there's been a lack of attention for a lot of areas. So yeah, I'd probably put these plans on hold for now.
Okay, and Jack Porter, you have been pretty vociferous about opposing the redevelopment of that area in both the long term and short term. So how do you reach a consensus on a commission that seems otherwise to be somewhat inclined to proceed with that project?
Yes, so before I get, I answer that, I want to say that I would support decriminalizing small petty amounts of marijuana possession. And when this came before our city commission last year, my opponent did not support this, and I do think that that's something that we do need to do, do need to do. To your question specifically, you know, I think that there was even support on the commission to take pause, to take more public comment in person. But I think that my interest is, of course, building coalitions with my fellow commissioners. But ultimately, a city commissioner is not elected to serve other city commissioners. Our leaders are elected to represent and serve the people. And that is my greatest commitment. And I think the coalitions we should be building are with our neighborhoods, not with other developers or even staff members, you know, or special interests who are involved in these processes.
Okay, and Ms. Bryant, since you were kind of name checked there by Jack when it came to that vote on the essential decriminalization of small amounts of marijuana, you can respond to that and then talk about developments like Walani, et cetera, please.
Okay, let me, first of all, just ask you to go back, and this is to the public, and double check and authenticate what my opponent just said. And I'm going to leave that at that on the whole issue because you can't pull out one piece of an issue and then make a statement that is supposedly reflective of an entire conversation. In addition to that, I would say that we are definitely there to serve the citizens of Tallahassee, Florida. There is no question about that. So what we have comments that we're not there to serve other commissioners, that absolutely is a true fact. And our behavior up to this point is reflective of that. The fact that we do our homework and actually come to unanimous votes is not a reflection of serving each other. In addition to that, I have to say that the Providence plan not only has been implemented to a large degree based on what the members of the community, the neighborhood said that was a priority, they just revised their plan, and we're continuing in that effort. So I just wanted to kind of go back a little bit on those issues. Now, tell me again, Tom, what is your question?
Okay, this is specifically the Walani development out along the Kusuki Road. But there are a few other smaller developments that also are being teed up for possible action in the not-too-distant future. So at this point in time, are those sorts of things appropriate, do you think?
You know, at this point in time, we have to, excuse me, especially with COVID-19, we have to do assessments along the way. This process, as I'm told about it, I was obviously not in office then. It started somewhere back in 1991, and it has had input from citizens. According to the timeline I was provided, in many, many instances along the way. It sounds like this is something that developed overnight, and there was no input. In addition to that, as we move today, we find that even though we can't gather together face-to-face because of the health concerns, we still are receiving input from our citizens. And we will continue to receive input from our citizens. We have, even now, as we move into meetings this week, even though we want to have our citizens be able to come and see us face-to-face in the commission chambers, it's not a good health decision. And as leaders in this community, we need to pave the way for the very things we're asking our citizens to do, wear masks, social distance, et cetera. So we are receiving input. We are reviewing the input. And when the decision was made just a week or so ago, maybe it's a couple weeks now, on the Walani expansion of the service area to the city limits, that door is not closed. So to suggest that there is no input coming from citizens is just erroneous. Bottom line is that there will be three or four additional opportunities for input. We have even established charrettes such that people in our community can hear and we can listen to what the concerns are. So just wanted to set the record straight.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Just about 10 minutes to go here in this program on Tallahassee City Commission, Seat 1. The three candidates, Elaine Bryant, William Moore, and Jaclyn Jack Porter. A few issues that have been brought up concerning campaign, though. Mr. Moore, not a whole bunch in the war chest right now. And because, again, of the pandemic, it makes it very difficult to do the face-to-face campaigning that you probably would like to do. So in addition to forums such as this, how do you get the message out in this kind of environment?
Well, through things like this, honestly. I also have social media, YouTube. You know, I make a lot of videos about not only Tallahassee's problems, but, you know, nationwide problems. You know, obviously, I'd love to win, but even if I lose the election, I've still gained a lot of fans and, you know, building my brand, I guess.
All righty, and of course, you have to bring social media into the equation for any contemporary political outreach that you might do. And Ms. Bryant, if I can direct to you, some folks, since we now have a majority-minority city commission for the first time in Tallahassee's history, just a concern that had been voiced was that, gee, does Elaine Bryant get out enough into the community to connect with the folks, as you said, in some of the lower-income neighborhoods who really need help and support from local government? You think you're doing enough? I know it's tough now because of the pandemic, but you think that more could be done?
Absolutely. I will never tell you I'm at my capacity for getting out into the community. Is it important? Absolutely. Have I been to many neighborhood meetings? Yes, sir. Even in the pandemic, I thought it, not robbery, just last Saturday, I'll just go there to get out to the farmer's market on the South Side of town and actually support them because business right now and economic vitality is based upon our ability to get out and support our businesses. Did I have on a mask? Yes. Did I try and do things that would help, obviously, keep us all protected? Yes. But am I getting out in the community? Absolutely, absolutely. Can I do more? Absolutely. I don't think I will ever get to where I will tell you until I, because I'm one human being that, and I can't get everywhere all the time. So I am going to continue to strive to push toward the goal of more interaction in our community. But I must also add that the commission as a whole, we moved three meetings last year into the neighborhood. We came out of chambers and moved into the neighborhood so that we could hear directly from people who no longer had to drive down to City Hall, but they could actually just talk to us from them actually showing up at the meeting. So neighborhood involvement for me is very key, very key, and I'll continue to do that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Jack Porter, again, something that had come up on social media. As you'd said at the outset, your campaign is based very much on a grassroots kind of, I don't want to say nickel and dime, certainly the contributions are a little bit better than that, or no one could run for office. But in your contributions, an awful lot of out-of-state stuff, and from downstate you have Representative Anna Eskamani, who's doing a fundraiser for you. And that is just something, again, I picked up on social media, that does Jack have a commitment to the community? Or is a lot of the beholdingness going to come from out of town when it comes to your performance on the commission if you're elected?
Yes, I mean, anyone who looks at my campaign contributions, which I would welcome them to do at Leonvotes.org, the vast majority of my contributions are coming from in Tallahassee. So I would say, you know, that I would fact-check that, certainly. As I said previously, we've had over 700 individual donors giving about an average of $50. We are extremely proud of that. I am proud to have the support and endorsement of Representative Anna Eskamani and be a part of a new generation of leaders who are stepping up. But I have many endorsements and supporters that are based locally. I've been here for 10 years. This is my home. This is absolutely where my support is.
Okay, very good. Folks, why don't we give everyone about two minutes? Again, no hard time, but we have to move it along because the clock keeps on ticking. Let's give everyone a couple of minutes to summarize their unique qualifications for this job. Ask for the order, as my salesman dad used to say back in the day, and we'll refer to our original order. Elaine Bryant, go ahead. And again, why do you deserve another term on the Tallahassee City Commission? Make your case.
Let me start by saying, over the last two years, I have committed myself to doing the things that will advance the city of Tallahassee. I am committed to service. When asked some time ago, well, when I was first appointed, Elaine, why did you want to do this? And my answer then is the same answer I have today. It is to serve the citizens of this community. And I think over the last two years, we've done a pretty good job of serving the members of this community. But I don't boast on that because there is still so much work to be done. So we have to continue to press toward that mark, which is really a higher calling for all of us who sit on the commission in order to actually reach goals and to ensure that the citizens' voices are heard, that neighborhoods are represented, that we listen to neighborhoods. I must admit to you that over the last three or four months, my commitment has not been to really advancing my campaign because I am a city commissioner. And as a city commissioner, I had to be committed to the job that had been assigned to my hands to do, which is to do the work of a city commissioner. So in many ways, I guess I may be a little behind. I don't know. But I'm still committed to serving because that's who I am. That's the integrity that I live with day by day. So I do, and would appreciate your vote. For those of you who are joining us today and those who will listen in the future, please vote for Elaine Bryant, City Commission, Seat 1. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. William Moore, your turn, sir.
So I have given more specific and detailed plans for the city than any other candidate. I mean, if you can go on my website, these are revolutionary ideas that have worked all throughout the world. You can go on my website, williammore2020.com. You can go on my Instagram, williammore2020. That's really the only thing I got to say. These ideas work, and you can check them out.
Thank you very much, sir. And Jack Porter, you got the final word today.
Well, thank you again, Tom, for having me. Thank you, everyone who's listening in. You know, I decided to run for this seat the day that the seat became open. I did not decide to run against anyone. I decided to run for the city commission because I believe that we have a crisis in trust in our city government. This is not Scott Maddox's seat. This is not my opponent's seat or my seat. This is the people's seat, and I intend to give the voters a choice on August 18th. In me, you will have a community and neighborhood advocate who will reform City Hall, funded by everyday working people and 700 individual donors. I'm not funded by developers seeking to curry favor at City Hall. My political consultants are my neighbors and friends. My special interest is in everyday people. I know it would be easier not to have to answer to voters. It's not easy to do this, and I don't think that it's easy to be a commissioner or a leader. I know it'd be easier not to have public comment. But people deserve a choice. City Hall insiders and big interests have made their choice, and the voters will make theirs on August 18th. Please join us at jackforTallahassee.com and vote Jack Porter on August 18th.
Jack Porter, William Moore, and Elaine Bryant, thank you all for being part of this special Political Perspectives program, the third in our series, which will be rolling on as we head towards those magical dates, one of which Jack Porter just mentioned, of course, which is the primary election in Leon County. Deadline for voter registration, if you are not registered, is July 20th. That early voting date kicks off on August 18th. That early voting date kicks off on August 3 and then continues through the 16th of the month with a complete list of early voting sites on Mark Early's website. He, of course, our supervisor of elections for Leon County, and the primary election day is August 18. Again, thank you all for being part of the program. Perspectives produced by WFSU Public Media in Tallahassee. Thanks going out to Taylor Cox, Paul Dam, Amy Diaz de la Viegas, Tricia Moynihan, and Lydell Rawls, and our director of content, Kim Kelling, is also our Zoom facilitator and executive producer of the program. I'm Tom Flanagan, and next week, we are going to hear from the five candidates for Tallahassee City Commission, Seat 2. And we invite you to join us then, on air and online from WFSU Public Media. Please take care and be safe.